I call the meeting to order. If you all will stand, please, and follow me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation to be given by Randy Brown, pastor of the Lowell Assembly of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus, your Son. We thank you for your presence with us and the privilege, Lord, of walking with you each and every day. Lord, we are reminded in your word that you have said, unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain that build it; and unless the Lord keeps the city, the watchmen stay awake in vain. So without your help, Lord, we can do nothing. So we invoke your help here tonight. We ask for your wisdom upon the mayor and upon each council person as they seek to guide this city into the future. We ask for unity, God, and we pray against the spirit of pride, for without pride there can be no contention. So, Lord, I pray that you bless this meeting and help us, help as you bless this city in the future, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Row call, please.
Linda Shimko.
Here.
Jerry Foley. Eric Schein.
Here.
Darren Brock.
Here.
Keith Williams. Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Marty Latham.
Here.
Paula Allred.
Here.
We have a quorum.
First item is the consent agenda, which contains the Lowell City Council minutes and a regular meeting of August the 18th, and also the Lowell City Council minutes regular meeting September 1, and in addition, a financial statement for August of 2009.
On the September 1st meeting minutes on item C, as a correction, the motion to place on first reading by title only was actually by myself. It has it is Eric Schein on there. I'd say I made the motions to Eric.
Instead of Eric?
Yeah.
Okay.
Marty actually caught that for me. Thanks, Marty.
Am I looking at the wrong minutes?
It's September 1st. We've got two sets of minutes. The item C on September 1st.
Any other questions or comments? If you have no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Row call, please.
Paula Allred.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Marty Latham.
Yes.
Eric Schein. Darren Brock.
Yes.
Linda Shimko.
Yes.
Next item is a public forum. I don't believe anyone signed up on the sheet. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak?
Is the Shine Award on? Is it anywhere?
Uh-huh.
No.
Today, we received the Shine Award in the state of Arkansas, second year in a row, and I'll let Michael speak a little bit about it, since he and Chris did all the work.
Briefly.
To fill out the forms.
Well, I think it was about a month ago that we came and told you all that we had put the application in. I think you had a copy of the application. Turned out really well for us. We found out today that they, we were, we were chosen for towns between 5,000 and 10,000, and the fact that we didn't know is that the, they actually have judges, two judges from out of state, and then a judge from Arkansas that isn't, isn't associated with the commission at all. So it's nice to get some recognition. It was on KNWA tonight. There were some, some other press. The Daily Record did a story on it. So we feel really good about it and think it was a, it was a good moment for us.
Thank you, Michael. Next item is an ordinance amending the city of Lowell ordinances and code of ordinances to alter the composition and terms for the board of zoning adjustment. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I had some comments on that. I had taken the liberty, let me pass a copy down for you guys. I wanted to see basically what the other cities around us were doing with their, with their board of zoning adjustments. Of course, most of the smaller cities are using their planning commission. I think they have a copy down there.
Oh, sorry.
Let me pass it back.
Can you have one back?
Most of the smaller cities are, are using their planning commission, you can pick that one there, for their, their zoning, their zoning adjustment board. The four cities, of course, Rogers and Bentonville, Springdale, Fayetteville, do have a separate board, and I looked up the, the terms of those and I printed a copy out for, for everybody up here. Rogers has the requirements. They have five people for three-year terms, and one of their members is a planning commissioner who serves as the chairman of the zoning, the zoning board. So they require five people with one being a planning commissioner. I looked to see what Bentonville did. Bentonville has five citizens appointed by the mayor, and it's not on this printout page, but they were, they were serving three-year terms too. I didn't get the right page that had that. Springdale puts a lot of modifications on, on who you can appoint. They, they had recently modified theirs. The board consists of five members also, composed of individuals with knowledge and experience in the technical codes such as design professionals, contractors, or building industry representatives, and in addition to that, they have two alternates, one member at large from the building industry, and then they have one member from the public, just at large from the public. So they have five and two alternates that serve in Springdale. And then Fayetteville, Fayetteville's the one I found that does the staggered five-year terms, but they do seven members on their board of adjustments. So they have a really large board that serves in that. So I, I just wanted to see what the other cities were doing, because I was still just a little concerned that we're wanting to create a board that only has three members on it for five-year terms. I would just be a lot more comfortable with, with, with five people going for three-year terms, and I just wanted to do some comparisons to see what's being done around us.
Darren, I appreciate you digging this information up. I think it's helpful in making some decisions. I only think I would add in reading this yesterday was, I would like to see us kind of like, it looks like Springdale did, define more the background, the history of what these three or five, however we decide, do, what they, what they do, what's their profession. They should be somewhat in the, maybe on the engineering side, maybe in the contractor, who knows? I mean, they need to be familiar with the building codes and, you know, NEC and things of that nature, I feel like, and I think we can help direct that by, by stating that.
I think the last meeting I mentioned that I would appoint the members for approval by the council.
Mayor, may I just miss it for a second? I see exactly where you're coming from on that, and that's very common. We're gonna have, if you're gonna have a bartending, you know, board, you want someone who knows about roses lime juice, right? Or you're gonna have something like that. But if, if you're gonna have those kinds of requirements, then you're gonna get hamstrung, because you're gonna look, you're gonna want residents. There's a, it's, it's right now debatable whether they have to be, but let's assume that you're gonna want residents, right? We're always gonna want residents on this board. You gotta find those people, and then they come with some, that you can, you assume they come with some preset notions about the way things should be. A developer, you think is gonna think like a developer and a realtor, and what you, if you leave those off, you can keep those people in mind when you're selecting, and when the, when you're affirming what the mayor may select, but at least you have the flexibility. So you don't have to say, alright, someone had to go to University of Dallas to be on this, you know, board. You don't have to look for that person and find them. You can, you can be more flexible. And so I recommend some, if you want requirements, like minimum requirements, some characteristics about maybe experienced education, residence in the city or something like that, but leave yourself a little more flexible, you know, in that regard.
That makes sense.
I, I think another thing too, we have to consider the size of our town. We're just 7,000 people, and the people here on this commission, of course, naturally would have to live in town. Now, we don't have the volume of people to draw from that Fayetteville, Rogers, and Springdale do. So I, I think with that in mind, we need a smaller commission or board of adjustments in order to retain the quality of membership on the board.
Mayor, I mean, I'm in favor. I like, I like the idea of having an alternative source for people to go to, you know, if they're unhappy with the planning commission's decision. So I think that's favorable, and I'm assuming the process would be that they would present a resume or something about themselves, you know, so that we would have a chance to review that.
You bet. They will have a resume, they will be presented to each member of the council prior to the meeting, so you can look at them. But I think, Kendall, and Darren, it's, I think the population is somewhat against us of meeting these size requirements and these requirements that you were talking about, Kendall. I don't think we have that many people live in town that can even meet those requirements.
Well, I mean, to work in the construction field or along those lines, I don't know. I guess, like you said, it's up to, the final decision lies on the council to make the decision based off the candidates. But I, I feel like, I think it would be good. Nothing against someone that's never done anything in the real estate or construction or whatever it may be in the engineering side, but to have some people that have no experience in that coming in and making decisions that are, a lot of them are, are, you know, code-driven or, you know, ordinance-driven, that they don't know anything about, or it's life safety in a lot of areas, could be.
Well.
So I don't know. That's why I was, that's why I was thinking, my mind was.
Right. I don't think we can find three people that are familiar with ordinances in the city of Lowell. It's just like the council, the mayor, the planning commission, none of those people are familiar with these ordinances when they're either elected or appointed. I just don't, I don't think you can find them here in this town.
True.
My concern, issue, I have talked to two engineers and a former plant manager. Now, these three people are very, or have been, and one of them still is, very accustomed to making tough decisions, and that's what we need, because some of these decisions are pretty tough to make. And in my view, you need people that's accustomed to making this type of decision. It's, it's pretty hard for a lot of people to make tough decisions, and those people that are accustomed to that rise to the level above the rank-and-file people. And that, that's my whole concern about it, is that we need a very good quality of person with some actual decision-making in their lifetime.
Well, to weigh in on this a little bit, if I could, I'm kind of leaning still toward the five people to dilute it a little bit. I mean, I think you're talking here about three people that can make really tough decisions that are of a like mind. If we don't specify a little bit of qualifications for these people, maybe minimally, then you put the council in a really bad position, because if we see something, we've gotta veto it, rather than, this, this goes to forever. I mean, it goes on beyond our terms and, and into our children's terms unless somebody takes it off the books. So looking at the council, giving the mayor the discretion to pick and appoint some people, I think is a great thing, then you have to bring it to the council, but, and I have no doubt that you would pick really good people, there's no doubt about it. But I don't know what would happen later on down the road. So I think having some minimal qualifications is a good idea. I also feel like the five people is a good idea. I mean, how many people are on the Springdale council? Is it eight? Fayetteville? I mean, we're talking the same council members, the same planning commission members, so I don't know why the board of adjustment, and I have great hopes that Lowell's gonna go crazy and grow like crazy, but I feel like if someone is coming to the board of adjustments, they, they need to have as good a shot as they can, not just to get denied whatever it is or to protect the city, but to get that variance or whatever it is that they're requesting, particularly if they're spending volumes of money, so, you know, developing in our city. I, I feel like a five will dilute a three a little bit in that three could be way too controlling and too domineering. On the terms, the five-year terms, I, I would be more inclined to go with the three, I think. The rotating's a good idea, but I mean.
Mayor, have we gotten any public feedback? Is the public, have you heard public opinion as far as if, if the public itself is?
No.
Is it one way or another?
No, I haven't talked to any of the public about it.
Well, I would say that, you know, we talk about not having that many people in Lowell to pull from. I mean, currently, we have a board of adjustments, it's not like we're creating one, and it currently has seven members. So we're going from seven to three is what we're looking at. We're not like, are we gonna create a three, are we gonna create a five? What have we got now, and what are we going to if we're gonna change? And, you know, I, I just, I think it's a pretty deep cut, and I, I do think Lowell has a lot of quality individuals that would be willing to serve and, and give their time. And that's, again, where three years might be easier than five in that, because a lot of people that are qualified and have these qualifications, five years sounds like a long time to a lot of them, where three years is, is a little bit more manageable time period, because in, in real estate and building and construction, all of that, a three-year project looks a lot different than a five-year project.
But how often do we have appeals? I mean, is that a regular basis that we have appeals?
They would probably meet once a month.
Okay.
Has, has the compensation been decided yet on?
No.
Assuming there's gonna be some, that, that is the plan?
Yes, I would think they would be due some compensation.
Do you have an idea of what that might be?
No, I was thinking, you know, if, if we go with the three members for these terms, I was gonna recommend $100 a meeting.
I think we might need a little clarification on, on how this board operates with, with the planning commission. Right now, there's, I mean, we've talked about how they're fox-watching the henhouse type thing, but I'm not aware of anything that the planning commission does that would appeal to the board of zone or otherwise. The planning commission actions appeal to us. If the board does something, something they don't like, that appeals to the circuit court. There's not a case where you appeal a planning commission decision to the, to the board or a board decision to the planning commission.
Correct.
So, did I have that correct, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that, so.
But where I'm coming from on that, Darren, is the planning commission has one purpose and the board of adjustments has another.
I understand that, but, but it was being portrayed before like, well, the planning commission, if you didn't like it, you appealed it and it went right back to the same group of people. Well, no, it doesn't go back to the same group of people. It comes to us if you appeal the planning commission. So I didn't want to have a, a bad perception out there, because you don't appeal a planning commission decision to this board. Those two don't ever watch each other. And, and last meeting, we were portraying that otherwise.
Yeah, that's, that's true. You're right there.
Well, no, they have to, if the planning commission says you've got to have a variance, they've got to take that to the board, don't they?
It's true. Yes, but the planning commission doesn't rule on the variance.
No, the board of adjustments does.
The board of adjustments rules on the variance, right. But, so it's not like they're appealing to the other board.
And it doesn't come here, does it? Doesn't it have to go to a higher court or something?
The board does.
You are the highest court, Marty, Darren.
Oh, yes. I thought if, if you failed the, through the board adjustment, don't you have to go to county or circuit or something?
Yes, it's, it's very strict. The board of adjustments is a very strict little, little creature. It has two jobs and two jobs only. Can only do two things. It can grant or deny a variance, or it can overrule or not overrule staff. Staff, not infection, but Mike Solomon. So what Mike Solomon says goes with regard to staff decisions, you know? Do I need a rezone? Yes, you do. You're in the wrong zone. I don't think I do. I think that line's over there. Well, if you don't like the way I call it, go talk to the board of adjustments, okay? And if you don't like what the board of adjustments says, go to circuit court, you know, in Benton County. And, or, you know, my, the back of my lot drops off, can I move my house just 10 feet into the front setback? Mike Solomon says, I can't say yes or no to that, because rules are rules. I can't bend them. You have to get a variance. So they go to the board of adjustment, the board of adjustment either says yea or nay. That's all they do. That's it. That's very complicated. It could also not just be Mike Solomon, I'm sorry, it could also be Don and Donnie, but, because some things that they do move over into the planning world. But really, that's all it does, and the confusion might be that, that staff is working with the planning commission, because they know what the planning commission is gonna do. They know they're gonna wanna see that as a rezone or as a CUP. So, you know, they sort of work together, whereas the board of adjustment is a pure appeal. It's, you know, I'm gonna throw this at three different people or five different people, 10, whatever it is. You know, I don't agree with staff, I don't agree with Mr. Solomon, I wanna try somebody else. And so that's, that's their job, a strict little job.
But something from the, a decision by the board of adjustment will not ever come to the council, will it? It shouldn't.
It's not possible.
The planning commission would come to the council.
It's not possible.
And I was trying to think back in the past of the things that had come, that I had, I guess they had to have come from the planning commission to the council.
And that's kind of rare, too. That's, it's not an automatic thing, but you can build an appeal to the city council. The city council, no one can rezone anything except the city council. So every rezoning request comes to the planning commission first and then the city council every time. It's gonna have to be here. But a CUP denial wouldn't have to come to city council necessarily. And those are getting more.
Tom, if I understand correctly, the board specifically is really supposed to follow the letter of the law, are they not? Or, or is there, there's truly room for them to interpret?
Well, the, with regard to agreement with staff, there's always gonna be something a little bit gray. You know, there's always gonna be something you can read one way or another. There just is. Staff can say, listen, we've been doing it this, you know, we've always counted, we've always counted shrubs as trees, okay? So when you talk about removing a certain number of trees, I'm gonna count the shrubs. But the board of adjustments might say, it don't say shrubs, it says trees. I know the difference. I disagree with staff, you know? So there can be traditions, there could be customs and such. With regard to a variance, you know, what this, what the state law says is basically, it's a judgment call. You judge whether that land is so unique that you shouldn't apply the law strictly to that person. You should give them some wiggle room. And that's a judgment call, and so it's different every time. And that's why it goes directly to circuit court, because they're making a judgment. You know, they're acting as little judges, petty judges.
I'm, I personally am comfortable with three, as long as we find three well-qualified people. And I think that's more, I think that's a much larger, better decision or a, a larger decision than particularly the number of people. I think it's finding very, very good qualified people that can make good decisions. And so I feel like as far as that process is concerned, we really need to do a lot of screening to get the right people making those decisions.
You guys interview people for different things. You've interviewed, I know you've interviewed council members for appointment, right? In, in open meeting, and so the, you know, the mayor says, here's, you know, Janelle, and here's Madonia, and here's, you know, Farrell, I want you to, it isn't a veto, Marty, that you would say, hey, are those three people qualified? I might wanna interview them before we, before we affirm or deny those folks. And you could do that, you know, you could interview them. I wouldn't do it in executive session, but you could do it in a special meeting or in this meeting right here. And so you wouldn't feel like, I'm vetoing, you're just saying, all right, the mayor's brought us candidates, now let's see if, if we as a council think that they're qualified.
But, but I think, once again, back to Marty's point earlier, is this is something, if we pass this tonight or next week or whenever, this is something that's gonna continue on for years and years until either the council shoots it down again. So I think that's why I'm back on it. We don't have to be so specific that it has to be a PE, electrical engineer. I'm saying a broad, hey, one person must have some engineering in the field design experience. One, I'm, I'm just throwing some of the hat, I'm not telling you how we should write it. One person should have some construction. One person should be a general, just a town liver that just, a stay-at-home mom or something that doesn't necessarily have any construction experience. So you have a broad, you know, spectrum of, of folks on that board. That's kind of where my mind was going. So you have a little piece of, so someone may not be knowledgeable in this code, but this person can help this guy out, say, hey, this is what the code says. And we have other people that just think from a good common sense level. That's where, that's all I was trying to say about my comment earlier, that I don't think, I agree, this is a small town, but I think there is a lot of, I mean, you can look at the, the income meeting for the, the city, there's obviously some, some educated people that live in, in the city. I don't know, based off income.
And to that point, probably the very minimum requirement is we should have that they live in Lowell, and that requirement's not in here right now. We could have three people from Fayetteville, the way it's written right now.
I'm not sure that a degree necessarily says that they have all the experience in the world either. I think there's a lot of people that live in Lowell and, that have actually been through the process.
Absolutely.
Anytime anyone has had any problem with their property or with anything they've tried to do, they have gained experience. So I think it's wrong to say that we can't find five qualified, willing people in this city. I, I have a lot more faith in the people that live here than that. Nor do I, I feel like we should stick something here forever and ever and ever, that, I, I would go with five people, three-year terms, and move to put it on third and final reading. I think the qualification, the mayor has to kind of sort that out as far as qualifications. I, I would say probably put in the Lowell living here.
To Lowell.
Yeah.
I think they need to live in City of Lowell.
Oh, yeah, they would be residents of Lowell.
Well, we need to specify that. I mean, you would choose people, but the next mayor may not choose people from the City of Lowell, if we didn't specify that.
Let me motion to amend.
A comment or a motion?
I don't know. Okay, I would move to amend the ordinance to five people, three-year terms, and have the requirement.
Michael?
I'm just gonna say, right now, the planning commission, we require them to be in the planning area, not the, not the city limits. Tom, if, I don't know if that trial.
I think that's legal. I, I think that that's, right now, the AG has said that's okay, and the courts have said that's all right.
So that, that, that would be, the only suggestion I would have is to make it the planning area.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
President of planning area, but something else that would be good, too, is President of planning area, but something else that would be good, too, is when, when these five people are to be chosen, I think it ought to be out there, you know, if there's a vacancy on the city council, there's a vacancy on the planning commission, you know? To, to let people know that the opportunity to serve the community is out there. And, and it might bring in more people with more experience than, than we realize. So, I'd say five-year, five people, three-year terms, and add resident of the planning area, Lowell Planning Area.
Is that a motion to amend, or is that?
Are you saying that no staggered terms? Is that what you're saying by that?
Well, you stagger the term.
I'll be doing.
We don't want them all expiring at the same time.
Well, I, you know, I was thinking you might get more people, because five years is a long time. You were right about that.
But you can still stagger, one of them expires next year, or two of them expire the year after that, and two expire the third year, and it's three years every time after that.
That way, you've got someone with some experience in there at all times.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, you wanna stagger when the three years expire, so they don't all expire the same year.
That would be fine.
I withdraw, I wanna withdraw the ordinance and maybe bring it back at a later date. Next item on the agenda is a resolution adopting a hazard mitigation plan for Benton County. Mike?
This is more of a housekeeping item than anything else. I don't know how many of you got a chance to pull up that two-hundred-and-seventy-some-odd-page document on the computer. I'm sorry I didn't print two thousand pages of, of document there, but what it basically is, is several years back, the, uh, federal government mandated that towns, cities, and the state, throughout the country, had to have, uh, emergency mitigation plans for large-scale disasters, albeit the hundred-year flood, albeit, uh, a large tornado-type thing that hit Oklahoma City a few years back, those types of things. And we, as a county, decided to go in and put it together as a whole county plan with all of the separate entities participating in that. So, for example, if some other small town in the area was to have the disaster hit them, our resources would be part of that countywide, uh, pool that would be pulled from to, to mitigate that disaster. Uh, also, the federal government, in their infinite wisdom, decided to also tie it to, um, the availability of funding, uh, in the future for, uh, helping to take care of those issues. If you're not a part, if you don't have a plan as an entity, or you don't have, or you aren't part of a larger plan such as this, then there are other stipulations which, which can be negative, and, and I think we can avoid that. So, what we did as a county was back in, and I wanna say it was two thousand and four, I may be off a little bit, they began working on this plan. Uh, we had a, a former employee here who was a part of that, uh, large commission that they put together, and they just recently, Marshall Watson, who's the head of D E M. uh, for the county, finished the plan, submitted it, got approval for it, but in order to make it official, he has to have a resolution from each participating entity, and that's what this is at this time, just asking to make this official so that we'd be a part of that, that, uh, large, larger scope of when it'd be done. Any questions? Thank you.
Any questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Was that Eric?
Yes, it was Eric.
Thank you.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
This will be resolution oh-nine-dash-one-zero.
Next item on the agenda is a memo to authorize a transfer of budgeted funds for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted expenditures as specified herein. Jimmy?
Council, as you know, back when that ice storm we had this year here, we've been looking around and decided, we've seen these bucket trucks, and we've seen how handy a bucket truck would actually be, so, we started just kind of looking around and seeing if we could find some, and, and just seeing how helpful, you know, a bucket truck be. So, but, the reason we're here, we finally found one, we looked it over, had the mechanic and everything look it over, so, we just here to see what y'all's ideals on thinking about a bucket truck.
Aren't we taking care of our street lights as well right now?
Uh, we, well, Sean's gonna get up and speak on that, as I understand, we gonna have to start, yes.
But we're gonna, we're gonna have to start maintaining that.
Yes.
So, this would also help?
Yes, it's also help on that, tree trimming that we still got, it'd help on a lot of items.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I, I don't have a problem, as long as we do have other uses. I mean, hopefully, the ice storms are once-in-a-generation type thing, and I don't wanna ever see it again, so I wouldn't wanna buy something for that. But, you know, assuming that you do have several other things that this would be useful for.
Yes, yes, we have other things, tree trimming, uh, changing, actually, the cities, we, the city's got a lot of lights now, going up with the parks, so it'd be a lot, a lot of uses for it.
And this is gonna be a dual purpose for the, the street department and the parks department, correct?
Yes, uh, yes, you'll say the administration, I mean, changing all.
Jimmy, I'm, out of curiosity, how old is this bucket truck you're getting? Is it?
It's a ninety-one.
So, it's in pretty good shape? Obviously, you said you had a mechanic look at it.
Yeah, it's a, our mechanic here at the city, we, we checked it out, and it's a pretty stable truck. It's a ninety-one, it's got seventy-five thousand miles on it. The actual truck's got eighty-two hundred hours on just the truck. The bucket's got thirty-two hundred hours just on the bucket. I mean, hydraulics, everything's seen, uh, I don't know if, they got a picture, we was operating it here the other day on the test run or not, right there, me changing the ball field lights right there, so, I mean, it seems pretty stable, it's got four outriggers, so it seems, seems a pretty nice little truck.
That's fifty-two feet in the air, that's the lights back behind the council, that's the tallest lights we have.
Is that, what's, is that the, what's the full extent on that? Is that about it?
About, that's about it, about fifty-five, I was about to, we wanted to get it, make sure we could change them ball field lights.
What does it cost us to change it if we have the power company do it?
I don't know with the power company, actually, Sean Poganski, I don't think a power company would change ours out here on a deal like that. Uh, if you rent one of them genuine moons like y'all see that I rented in the past, you're looking at just a day's rental time, it's hauled in and out at about six hundred bucks.
Mr. Mayor, I understand this is money we do have in the budget, we're just needing to transfer it for this purpose?
Yes, actually, this is money that, I guess, thanks to Jimmy and his crew, we saved during the ice storm, by Chris and Jimmy knowing the rules and regulations of FEMA, because, uh, they did comply, so the monies, well, in fact, there's more money in the budget than what Jimmy's requesting here, so, it's not an addition to the budget.
Right. Well, I would make a motion that we approve the appropriation of funds.
Excuse me, uh, Sean wants to explain the lights business to you all also.
I'm gonna write that down anyway.
I'm gonna snatch defeat from the jaws of victory, you just made a motion to.
I know, for real.
Thank you, Sean.
Hey, Tom. Uh, I didn't hear anything about Christmas lights, did you?
No pressure.
You weren't mentioning Christmas lights, were you?
No.
We can put you in an elf suit and get you up there to.
Put me up there on top of that.
Mary just notified us of a correction, it's sixteen thousand, not sixteen-five.
Oh, so sixteen thousand even?
Mm-hmm. And comparatively, to give you an idea, you, uh, two different models, I looked up from dealers today, one was a ninety-seven, one was a ninety-eight. Ninety-seven had just under a hundred thousand, the ninety-eight had a hundred and seventeen thousand. One was twenty-nine thousand, one was thirty-two thousand, so, you know, you can kind of see there that, that, the unit's worth the money.
Is this, is this bucket truck a diesel, or is it gas?
Yes, it's diesel. Power companies are kind of looking at the issue that they're leaning toward getting away from maintaining. They'll still do the initial hookup installs, but, uh, they're, they're leaning more toward us handling our own lights, plus just the lights we have on our own property. Other departments, uh, I know the I.T. department helps in different areas where we move cameras around. This one actually has a winch on it as well, where we can set poles, it's set up so that if we need to add lights, uh, future, it looks like we're gonna be adding lights on the soccer field, we can set the poles for that as well.
Thank you, Sean. I believe Eric's made him, or Darren's made a motion to approve the appropriation.
Well, let me, let me amend my appropriation to be sixteen thousand dollars even then.
Uh, I, we asked for sixteen-five and
Is that for extra?
We're, we're
Taxes.
We've got the truck bought, uh, if you all approve it for sixteen, but we need some, a little extra money to buy a safety harness for it, and that's why we wanted that.
All right, I, I leave my motion at sixteen-five, and as, as ready.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
This will be appropriations number oh-eight-dash-two-zero-zero-nine.
Next item on the agenda is a memo to authorize a transfer of unallocated funds for the purpose of meeting unbudgeted specified herein. Mary?
Uh, we've been, um, this is, we've got our first month's bill in on the credit card expense, and, uh, it was about eighty-five dollars for the month, so, we have to pay for that somehow, we can't pay for it out of the fines we collect over in court, so, we're, we're wanting to use the court automation to pay for that, and this would, we're hoping that, we really don't know how much it's gonna be each month, because that was just the first month, and people have to get used to knowing that they can use a credit card here. So, we were asking to transfer four-hundred-and-forty dollars out of the court automation funds to pay for that, uh, credit card charges.
You said we could not, uh, we could not charge for?
Right now, we can't, they've, there's, um, some kind of problem be, in between federal and state laws, where they can't, they, there's something going on, so we're asking for attorney general opinion.
Mary, are we leasing our equipment?
What?
Are we leasing our credit card equipment?
Uh, we don't have to pay for it. This is the only charge we have on.
Okay, so it's just strictly for the card usage, not for the machine?
That's right.
Okay.
So, we are, we will not be able to recoup these funds that we're gonna be paying this eighty-five dollars? Is that what I understand?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
There's a convenience.
These funds come out of court automation, which
Yeah.
only be spent on court automation funds. I think this first month's charge was
Eighty, about eighty-five.
Two percent, about two percent of what we collected.
Right.
Which is, uh, very good, uh, cost to the city, I can tell you.
That's because if they use a debit card, it's, it's really, really, really inexpensive to us. And they did use a debit, debit cards a lot.
Mary, I'm assuming you're looking into whether or not we can legally charge a convenience fee for usage of the machine?
That's right, that's why we're waiting for the attorney general opinion.
Okay.
What was the dollar amount on the eighty-five dollars?
Forty-four hundred dollars. A little bit more than that, but right around.
A thousand?
Huh?
Forty-four hundred or forty-four thousand?
The, um, I thought she was asking me the dollar amount of sales in the first month, is that what you were asking?
Yes.
Yeah, forty-five hundred dollars.
So, is that how, you just, you assume that for the The rest of the months of the year, forty-five hundred, that's how you came up with the twelve?
No, I raised it some.
Okay.
Cause I don't, I don't really know.
And we love that, because you might not have gotten that money otherwise.
It's collected funds, that's a good thing.
That's a great thing.
Eighty-five dollars to get forty-four hundred dollars is not a bad deal.
No, it is.
It's cheaper than me.
Well, it's a minimal cost, and, and, you know, it's easier, it might be a little easier to collect fines that way, so.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the appropriations.
So moved.
Roll call.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
This will be appropriations number oh-nine-dash-two-zero-zero-nine.
Next item is an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the city of Lowell, Arkansas, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such codes, and for other purposes. Tom?
Somebody, please, make a motion to suspend the rules and place it on third and final reading. You wanna read this whole thing?
I move to suspend the rules, place this on third and final reading by title only.
Which he's just done.
Roll call.
Leave a second.
Second.
Okay. Eric was my second. Marty Latham?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Linda Shimko?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Paula Allred?
Yes.
Darren Brock?
Yes.
Marty Latham?
Yes.
This will be ordinance number eight-hundred-and-sixty, eight-six-zero.
That concludes all the items on the agenda. Any comments from the council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If no objections, a meeting is adjourned.